Uh, roll call.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Sam.
Here.
Member Ray.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mashburn.
Here.
Councilmember Trailer.
Here.
Councilmember Twitty.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Collins.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm here.
All the presenters.
Thank you. Alright, uh, we got the presentation of August thirteenth, twenty twenty eight, and the presentation of August twentieth, twenty twenty eight, and up for approval is July eighteenth, uh, event right here.
Who will we accept?
Second.
Got a motion to second, in discretion. All those who better say aye.
Aye.
All opposed today. Alright, what about the consent agenda?
So what would the consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion to second, in discretion. We'll find out. I'll make a note of that building, find out for you. Alright. All those who better say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, today. Alright. One ordinance, uh, whatever ordinance. Sixteen thirty-nine, and a lot of that is housekeeping.
Yep.
Uh, clean it up, some language and making some things clear for people, uh, in the sanitation department, recycling yardways, uh, furniture you put on the curb, just, just making it so that, uh, sort of, you can understand and, uh...
Hold the way we audit sixteen thirty-nine.
So move.
Alright, got a motion, put it in first reading. Roll call.
Councilmember Deeds.
Yes.
Holden.
Uh.
Sam Singh.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Mashburn.
Aye.
Trailer.
Alright.
Twitty.
Aye.
Smith is aye.
Thank you. Alright, and Les, we got Les, okay. Uh, stepping.
Right, ordinance number sixteen thirty-nine, an ordinance amending Jacksonville Municipal Code, section eight twenty, regarding sanitation provisions for the Jacksonville Municipal Code, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I think we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion. Need discretion. Roll call, Mr. Holden here? Who?
No, we have Randy.
Randy Sugar, if you have need, you've got a question, Mike?
Uh, just, what is the size of the trailer?
Okay. Edge, four yards long, four yards high, four yards deep.
Sixteen by sixteen by...
Yeah. And it, it takes out the air, the compression, four, four, four cubic feet. It's not, you know, because you're gonna plow bushes, but I think where they're gonna be, but when you press them down, you get the air out of it, and it's, it's quite a good action. Our big haul truck holds twenty-four. Okay? It's a little lot of yardage. Uh, we've had a lot of yardage this year because people were... Uh, in discretion. Roll call.
Councilmember Deeds.
Yes. Hi.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Hey, I think we're looking to, uh, first read, thirty-nine, did...
Who's one more question?
Aye.
On the reason?
Yes.
We used to have dumpsters outside, through the cardboard.
Yes.
Is there a reason we didn't have those still out there with cardboard?
We've been inside the building, outside the building. Uh, because we might push the cardboard, that's something I'll talk to you.
There's a lot of people that are...
Yeah, uh, putting just cardboard, you know, our, our problem is the plastic. Alright. Any others?
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Mashburn.
Aye.
Trailer.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Okay, I don't have any motion to approve of the law, more than sixteen thirty-nine.
So move.
Again, a motion second, any more discretion? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Sam Singh.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Mashburn.
Aye.
Trailer.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Do you need a birthday call?
Yes. I don't need a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Uh, roll.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Sam Singh.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Mashburn.
Aye.
Trailer.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Smith. Smith.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so I bring this resolution eight hundred, uh, I entertain a motion to place ordinance, uh, resolution, resolution eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
On the first reading, all the firsts, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed today.
Resolution number eight hundred, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city council of the city of Jacksonville, Arkansas, in cooperation with the underwriter and bond council, to proceed with matters preliminary to the issuance of not to exceed approximately eight million, eight hundred fifty thousand principal amount of capital improvement and refunding revenue bonds, and one or more series of bonds to finance improvements, capital equipment, betterments, and extensions of service to the citizens of the city.
Obviously, we're gonna say that was fat practice.
To refund the city of Jacksonville, Arkansas, capital improvement and refunding revenue bonds, series twenty fifteen, to prepare and circulate a preliminary official statement and related documents, declaring the city's intention to reimburse itself for qualifying expenditures from the proceeds of the bonds, and prescribing to other matters relating thereto.
We have, yes, big, uh, curbing, we have, you know, big...
Sure, thank you, Mayor, thank you, city council members, um, we, this, uh, resolution involves your September one, twenty fifteen bond issue. Those bonds were issued and secured by franchise fee revenues, and, uh, the original amount of the issue was eight million, eight hundred fifteen thousand. The current amount outstanding is five million, nine hundred and ten thousand. We've been watching this bond issue, uh, the average coupon is three point oh six percent, and in this current interest rate environment, there are benefits to refunding those. Uh, in addition, based on our analysis, uh, the city could generate approximately two million dollars in project funds, and we could structure the bonds so that you would actually recognize cash flow savings of about two hundred thousand dollars, now this is depending on, on interest rates, on market movement, but your payment would be about two hundred thousand dollars less through, um, twenty, uh, the, the twenty thirty, or twenty twenty-nine, and then, of course, we would extend the debt in order to provide for these project funds for a final maturity of twenty forty. Um, so, basically, the summary is project funds of about two million, and cash flow relief in the first nine or ten years of about two hundred thousand dollars, uh, for an average payment of about five hundred, uh, the maximum payment, based on these preliminary numbers, would be about five hundred and thirteen thousand a year. You're currently paying just under your maximum seven hundred and twenty-four thousand a year, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, Mr. Trailer.
Alright, yes, now, you said these were...
I've been on with them.
That you're in twenty forty?
Yeah, it's real. So how are you seeing my...
He wants to know the... What's the name, what's the due date on the new...
Uh, the thirty.
I was gonna say twenty thirty, twenty thirty, twenty, okay, when, when...
Thirty. Is the...
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty.
Is the...
Oh, the old one is twenty thirty.
Twenty twenty nine.
The new one would be twenty forty.
That's correct.
We're gonna be adding two, we currently owe five million, a little over five million?
That's correct. Five point nine million is the outstanding balance.
When we get done with this, we're gonna owe eight million?
The par amount, based on our preliminary run, is seven point eight million.
What we're doing is borrowing to, to point eight million, basically.
Two, two million. And there's fees and stuff that you want to go into. It's right at two million dollars that we're borrowing for these projects.
And you're also, you're also borrowing to fund a, uh, debt service reserve, and we structured that at fifty percent of your maximum annual debt service, so basically you have, um, the, the amount it would take to pay off the old bonds, which is about five point nine million, two million in project funds, uh, about two hundred and fifty-seven thousand in a debt service reserve, and that's just a cash funded reserve that the trustee holds, and in the event franchise fee revenues don't come in at the level needed to make the debt service on the bonds, the trustee will access that money. If it's not needed, which has been the case on your twenty fifteen bonds, then it'll just go to make the final payment on the bonds, and then we estimated cost of issuance, we used about a hundred and twenty thousand, um, to pay the trustee fees, the, um, underwriter fees, bond council fees, et cetera.
So if we were to just call the bonds, redo them at the same amount, what would the payoff, when would the payoff be?
Um, the, the payoff, it, it, let's assume that you paid these off on December third, um, your payoff would be five million, nine hundred and ten thousand, nine twenty-five.
And that's what, no, or I guess basically refinancing, it's...
If we were just to refinance and not borrow?
Yeah, if we were just to refinance and not borrow, we would...
Pay down? Pardon? And keep our payments the same. If one of the things we're doing is, what were that seven?
We're never gonna pay this thing off, we keep borrowing against the...
How about some of the projects that we're looking at?
Well, building a new city garage is one, fixing, uh, the, the police department, the roof that leaks, and, uh, air quality in there, not like it needs to be, if you're having, do you emit a fire, they were carrying out buckets of water every day. Uh, building the new courtroom is the area important. Uh, Kevin has found a way for the shot shield to be less costly, so we put up the shot shield, recycle that lead, not put it in the water table, uh, and build a car wash behind IPD for, for the place to use, and the, the new city garage, we back up there where the police department is, and if there's enough money, we'll buy a generator to run the community center that power out. Those are, the water department has one, they may give us, not like you and Paul's included, but it's... So those are the projects.
On the courtroom, are you talking about redoing the courtroom, or building a new one?
Okay, building a new one in the same building. At the other end.
Okay.
Okay, so it's got, you know, the prosecutor's table.
Yes.
Uh, and got a new bathroom, and rethought of that, that way we can save a lot of money by not doing the dirt work, not doing, uh, slab, uh, being able to use the facility for holding the inmates when they come in, uh, that will, we'll update it all, we're gonna make it a nice courtroom, but we're also gonna make it COVID protected, it's gonna be, you know, with, uh, flexi glass and all that stuff in there, so, uh, yeah, and we may be able to sell their offices over there, so they'll, somebody probably over there, maybe, Chad Young has some blueprints working on it. Our courtroom is very, and, oh, and we're gonna remove all asbestos stuff.
Improve quality there, too, because that's...
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna put a new restaurant for you, building that thing.
Yeah, and, uh, I'm, I'm gonna talk to the school district, see if they want that courtroom, so they can have a, they can check it for themselves, just redo it, and that would be booked in their building then, it would be a wall dividing, uh, the two buildings, just kinda like it is now, you know, they're the same building, there's a wall. But, yeah, but, so, we're, uh, saving a lot of money, just building a freestanding building was gonna run us about two point six million. So, whoa, we have, we have, you know, our city garage floods, and, so, they'll have list trouble that they're working on, they'll start writing, saying, we're gonna move back to PD before they get out of work, and so ninety percent of our vehicles are over there by the place, you know, and so that's where our city garage used to be. And there's already a building that, that was set up with a foundational, which was for slab, and, and we'll use that building, so we're kinda recycling. Any other questions?
We know all the projects that you just mentioned, does that kinda, does that really see through two point?
I think it'll be in our...
I mean, do we know how much for each one?
We have, we have a special money for certain days, not just a blank checkbook to do projects that we wanna do. But we plan on doing all of those, with, and hopefully we'll have a couple hundred thousand that go before the emergency, uh, project.
Do you have ideas of what each one of those projects are gonna cost us?
Right. Uh, with Jimmy and I looked over, you know, once a city garage, you know, two hundred forty seven thousand, you know, so, what's each one, uh, is gonna be, we're, we're having to, we're probably estimating a little higher than corporate right now.
What is that is?
Uh, seven hundred thousand. Eighty thousand for room, nine thousand or so, yeah, to remove asbestos, for in this in there. How many is the, uh, shooting range, later, like, uh, about three hundred fifty thousand? And, you know, we're gonna take that recycled lead then, and half of it, you know, we put back for maintenance, and then the other half, we use for improvement.
Bob, I'd ask you, could you explain that, uh, at the shooting range again, please?
Well, it'll be the shot shield, and it'd be ninety yards where we shoot, behind it, we will start planting trees, things, that'll give us six hundred yards of additional tree to protect against noise. The shot hits it and falls down, and there's, we don't have to build the roads, the cost is gone, half of that collection, there's a, a thing that it falls into, you collect it, once, once a month you take it, or once, when you take it, you pile it up, you take down, get some of the lead, you know, so you go and sell it.
Whereas right now, what are they doing out there?
We, every five years, we dig up the ground, and we get about sixty percent of the lead that's in the ground, and we'll be getting somewhere around ninety-four percent of the lead. So we're, we're, one day EPA's gonna say, you're going to do it, then that cost is gonna be high, and, uh, it will help noise go into, going on, and solve one of these, and help a much difference in the week's one, but my main concern is that they have gone into the corner, wanting...
Uh, having the screen, were able to, uh, let the trees stand closer?
Yes, we have six hundred yards of trees we can grow, we may even plant some of that because...
That'd be on a hill.
I don't know, trees are the best noise blocker yet, but, uh, what we may put is bad move, because it grows tall and fast and safe, uh...
Not all of that, but...
Both pine trees, 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 those are exactly what we're up there, and we're gonna curl them around on the ground to kind of stop some of the noise as well, so it'll enable us to have more frequency out there to slow down those, pray that helps. Yes.
And I was on that committee, Bob, when we were talking about that, you know, there, a while back, two, three, four months, and, you know, EPA's gonna eventually make us do that anyway, you know, but, but you are talking about, uh, recapturing of money, you know? If they're cheap.
You saw this, or anyone right here?
Is there a mic here?
No, you can talk.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm not over there in public. I, I was just gonna say, I was kind of on a committee when we were looking into doing that, and, um, the recapture of the lead itself was, you know, we, we were talking about anywhere from sixty to eight thousand dollars, of being able to recapture lead if we're just letting it sit out there, but what we're hearing is, because of, you know, the, the EPA, that eventually we think that they're gonna make us do that anyway, and so we would be ahead of, we would be ahead of the curve, and when we're ahead of the curve, that makes it good, but we'd be able to use that, and the curtains we were looking at, where hopefully we're gonna be able to get in our system about ten years on, before you had to start worrying about them, so it would be a noise barrier, but it would also let us be ahead, go ahead, sir. Now, it would also let us, uh, be ahead of the curve, but it would also generate some more revenue back in, and it would be, you know, a great asset to the city, because, you know, we, you know, everyone's not big blazes with the, with the range, but I would tell you this, yeah, you know, everyone, we could get more people to use it, but it would be more beneficial for the city. I mean...
And, and we can definitely plant trees closer with the screens.
Yes, sir.
That's the only thing that's getting us up there, right?
We have to have seven hundred yards now, for the fall. We won't be deep.
Well, yeah, we'd be able to capture, I just, you know, and we've seen, I've seen it in other places, so it is, you know, it would be beneficial.
Yes.
You know, places have done it.
And, uh, they, they can hold up to eighty mile an hour winds, which is, but they don't have... Kevin's come a way to get the stuff on the post chief, but, you know, thanks, do the same to do it in the house, to load the post.
Bob, on that bamboo, you've got some wild moss that we've had, so...
Well, you know, wherever you see it, it grows, you can't stop.
I think there's some deer out there, and they'll, they'll...
They'll like it.
Yeah, you don't have that bamboo long.
Well, I don't think that's, 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 we have, we have it behind a wall street, somebody planted it, it has taken it home, and, uh, so... So, any other discussions? Okay. I entertain a motion to approve of the law, resolution eight hundred.
So move.
I got a motion of second, in for discretion. All those who better say aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed today. Okay, motion cured. Alright. Moving on, now we have an ordinance that Mr. Collins approved of.
Uh, ordinance sixteen thirty-seven is a continuation of sixteen hundred that we did in March of two thousand nineteen, to make sure that the, uh, uh, city's, uh, elected officials are, uh, being properly documented for their pay. Uh, what we originally had was that, uh, the elected officials, they mentioned in the city employees' personnel handbook, and, uh, that is still a long way from getting published, and I wanted to make sure that it was done, finished, and labeled before I got out of here. So, it's a long way to work though.
Yeah, it's just making, stating that, uh, other officials will follow the rules of our insurance program, is insurance, our laws, like officials should be given insurance, which they do, is written in their document.
Although the, uh, city attorney and that disagree on whether it's absolutely necessary, it's there, just in case if every bill counts necessary. This just codifies what the actual practice is.
That's right. Just what we've done for every day, but it just puts it right, in case anybody ever asked. Alright, I entertain, take a motion to place ordinance sixteen thirty-seven on first reading.
So move.
So move. Alright, any more discretion? Roll call.
Council...
Ready? Go ahead, hold on, I'm gonna tell them something.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Sam Singh.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Mashburn.
Aye.
Trailer.
Alright.
Twitty.
Yeah.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Ordinance number sixteen thirty-seven, an ordinance to modify Jacksonville Municipal Codes twelve two ten, twelve eight twenty, and, I'm sorry, two, six ten, two eight twenty, and two ten ten, and for other purposes.
I entertain a motion, so move, on first reading, second reading. Any discretion, seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Sam Singh.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Mashburn.
Aye.
Trailer.
Alright.
Twitty.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve sixteen thirty-seven, second reading, on third by read.
So move.
Second.
A motion of second, in for discretion. Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Sam Singh.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Mashburn.
Aye.
Trailer.
Alright.
Twitty.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Aye.
I entertain a motion to approve of the law, sixteen thirty-seven.
So move.
A motion of second. Roll call.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Sam Singh.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Mashburn.
Aye.
Trailer.
Alright.
Twitty.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Alright, we carried it, now then, uh, we have a couple discussion items, very discussion items from council member Collins, you have a portion.
I think we, uh, need to change, uh, change to, uh...
Les, do you have your mic on?
How about now?
Yes, thank you.
I think we need to move to, uh, voting by ward for council members. Uh, the first thing I would like to do is move that the articles written by Mr. Crown and the, on the ninth and the twelfth of September, they submitted, they recorded in the mid, meeting minutes, we emailed them to all the council members at our request. I made a motion.
Thank you.
It made that.
What, what now? What, what's your motion?
I moved that the articles written by Mr. Crown in the Jackson, in the, uh, articles on later on.
Yeah.
On these.
No, his articles, the written documents. I don't know, I don't know what's, that to go.
I'm sorry, what was he asking, that which articles be admitted to the minutes?
Uh, just some newspaper articles that Rick wrote, that they put in, be put the permanent record of the city.
That be a part of the minutes.
Be a part of the minutes?
Were they read, were they read in the meeting?
No, they were not.
Okay, Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, but they would have to be read in the meeting, correct?
I am.
Okay.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
Aye.
I, uh, suppose that, uh, since council members have received them, they've probably read the, uh, paper, newspaper articles about, uh, the race that we have in the second ward for the, uh, special election, and, uh, I am thoroughly disturbed that none of the signatures on one of the individual statisticians was from the ward it was then voted in, thoroughly disturbed, and that, that was ward two, twenty-five of them were from ward five, and twenty-three of those were from, within four hundred yards of a particular council member's home.
It must be nice.
That's all. on social media. I've made my opinion clear on this for several years, and this particular dumpster fire should make, make all of them want to take action. The at-large voting doesn't violate the letter of the law, but in my eyes, it violates the spirit. Ward Two needs to be represented by people chosen by Ward Two, not filtered by Ward Five for voting by everybody else. I received this correspondence from the NAACP today, and will read it into the record. I will email a copy to the city clerk. Sixteen, September two thousand twenty. Greetings, Alderman, Les Collins. This email is in response to the September twelfth later article citing some council members' desire to rescind the upcoming special election. We can all attest that the politics of Jacksonville often lead much to the desired. The Jacksonville NAACP's court state thoughtful and deliberate approach when politics and varying political interests are involved. Our mission is to secure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights in order to eliminate race-based discrimination for all persons. The Ward Two special election is of serious concern to our organization. Alderman Collins, what stood out in the September twelfth article was your concerns regarding petition signatures residents not living in Ward Two. The NAACP is in a hundred percent agreement that petitions run for office should be signed by residents of that ward only. However, this only addresses half the issue. The real problem is the at-large system of voting in Jacksonville. If residents are allowed to vote for a candidate in any ward, how can you restrict their petition signatures? This one-sided fix amounts to closing the front door while leaving the back door standing wide open. Historically, the at-large system was instituted solely to disenfranchise voters. This fact is irrefutable. Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five banned federal at-large voting permanently. And when legal aid challenged, courts across America continually ruled at-large to be discriminatory and unconstitutional. It remains a relic of discrimination, and it is indefensible in two thousand twenty. At-large inherently hinders minority groups, oral rights, and the less connected from electing local candidates of their choosing without outside influence. Bottom line, at-large cannot be defended without ignoring its proven inherent discriminatory implications. Where local groups choose maintaining this inequitable system of voting, the general intent perception is to ensure majority control. Jacksonville NAACP asks the council, council to move to dismantle the at-large system and replace it with ward-only voting. This move would require oral courage and a servant's heart. Incumbents would have to ignore their own self-interest, do what's in the best interest of the citizens. Just think, your wards can be at minutes. Imagine the citizens of Jacksonville enjoying a new level of political access and involvement in their community. Imagine greater participation in the election process of the city. Imagine citizens and leaders being more accountable to one another. Can you imagine Jacksonville moving forward, soaring higher? Thank you for, for your consideration. Let's stand by the Jacksonville NAACP Executive Committee, and it also has an enclosure that I'm not going to read from, but I would like to send out my fellow council members. The, there are carbon copies sent out to, to individuals also. I told the representative from the NAACP that I really don't see it as a race issue, but as a self-determination of representative, uh, representation issue. But I do say this point. I also mentioned that the people of Jacksonville will have to call their council members and motivate them to act on this. I've been asking for this conversation for three years. And I recommend to the citizens to please alert your council members to your feelings on this issue. That's all I have for this.
Any other council members who should address them?
With all respect to the NAACP, that is not the case of the city of Jacksonville. The city of Jacksonville is a whole. We work together. If you have Alderman representing just their ward, when it becomes budget time, I guarantee you, if I'm only elected by Ward Two people, I will be all up in that budget process trying to get as much money as possible for Ward Two, to the detriment of the other wards. This has been the history that has happened in other cities that have ward representation. The wards fight among themselves for their piece of the budget. Furthermore, I have always represented everybody in this city. Just this week, a person from Ward Two, a lady of color, called me up with a problem. She did not want to talk to her Alderman, she wanted to talk to me. She knew who I was, she knew that I had a rep of trying to help people out, and we solved her issue. I came up to City Hall, and the city, and myself, we solved her issue. I would take like heck to tell somebody in this town, I don't, you, you didn't get to vote for me, so I can't serve you. Well, I would serve anybody in this town, even if it was a ward issue. But there's a big problem. I have always served this entire town. I couldn't care less about racial issues. I think everybody in this council couldn't care less about that issue. We just want to do the best for the city of Jacksonville. The particular instance that you're citing that brought this up is an aberrant, abhorrent interest image. It's very unusual, it's never happened before. We all know why it happened this time. But because it happened this time, it's no reason to throw out a system that has been working for the best for the entire citizens of Jacksonville. Thank you.
Any other council members who should address?
I do, I have to agree with Terry Sandstein, because I do help a lot of people in Jacksonville, not just in my ward.
I think the, the first year council was in Ward Four, right? She was in Ward Four, yes. Okay, not Ward Two. Correct that.
Well, I'd like to say most of my phone calls come from Foxwood and so on.
Mine come from all over.
Well, I know them, okay? I know a lot of people over there, so that's where they call. They're gonna call.
Right, they're, they're gonna call.
I want to say his mine comes from all over. A good example was when the Trail Park incident, I was over there in my truck, helping people, trying to make sure they had a place to stay. So, I think the zoning issue, Ward, the reason I bring this up, since it is coming out, is that when I was on the school board, Les, we got a special school issue, and Reid can attest to this also, is that we had three, well, one other member from Jacksonville, but the problem was that they all fight for their own area, just like you stated. They want one if it is, one if it's that, and then they kept kicking us to the curb. I mean, I fought tooth and nail with a lot of other people here in the city of Jacksonville to get out of the district. And the very person that was on the same school board, quickly, was against me, because it was gonna mess one's off. So, where it's gonna start, if you go that way, I mean, that's what they want, the NAACP people say they want that, they can try to fight for it, whether I'm against it or just be honest, because I don't mind serving the whole community. When I ran for office, the only agenda I have running for office is for the city. I don't have an agenda for a crime range, I don't have an agenda because I want somebody off the board, I don't have an agenda because I want the swimming pool running. I have an agenda of, I want everybody in the city to be pleased and taken care of. And that's the bottom line. And I know, if we break it down zones, oh, come on, I, I serve over board like that, Reid can attest that, you know, it can be, it can give you hemorrhoids.
We don't want no hemorrhoids.
Any other, anybody else?
I honestly do not believe that if we were elected by a ward, that we would give up on the city of Jacksonville, but there are some interests that you do need to take up for your ward. I actually think that the people that do run for office probably have a little bit bigger heart than that. But I do have a lot of faith in people. Most people. Not all.
Okay, Les, you want to go to your next discussion?
Sure. At the racetrack, I was just, my man sits up digging up.
That sounds good. That's, oh, which one?
I would like some input from our fellow council members on ways to make the streets safer, since we're parking on the street. The four components that are at issue here are parked cars, children, pets, and excess of speed by motor vehicles. Children and pets jump out from in between the cars parked on the road, letting motorists little time to react. We can't fix that, so we have to get compliance for the speed limits. And so far, the only solutions that have been brought to me are more police approaches, which takes police away from more pressing work. Permanently affect speed bumps, which are expensive and produce hazards and irritants of their own. The other thing I heard about that I have not heard brought up is temporary speed bumps that can be deployed by citizens as needed. I hope somebody here has had experience with temporary speed bumps that they might share.
What about parental control? Yeah. What about parental control? When your kid jumps out in front of the car, should the parents not be out there watching your children?
Yes.
I know this is a hard fixed idea, that a lot of parents don't do this, but in a normal world, they should be.
Well, our kids aren't playing outside like they used to either, at all. Yeah, most of your kids are.
They are in my area.
Chief, is, is I, cars parked on the street a problem for PD?
No, we haven't had any problems with it. We haven't had any accidents. We haven't had any kids hit. I mean, it's possible at any time it happens around the country, but it's not been a problem for us. It hasn't been a problem responding to calls. My only concern is when there's too many and a fire truck can't get through in a cul-de-sac or something like that.
Can you check on Warren Street? Because we got cars parked everywhere, every which way. It blocks the entire road. It's just a block off the main street by the library, which is sad.
We, we already have a state law that says the left, left side tires, oh, I'm sorry, passenger side tires can't be more than eighteen inches from, from the curb. And that's a state law that we've always tried to enforce anyways.
And the passenger side has to be, side be parked. That'd be part of the direction you're going.
Yes.
The head, the head, not the.
Right, that's illegal. And they can give a ticket. She'd have to be on Warren Street. That seems to be several phone calls I did about Warren Street.
I know. It's getting mad, I'll do.
What, the parking, or what, what's the problem?
Parking, drugs, uh.
Noise.
Noise.
Isn't your baking house over there?
Yes, water's running out, baking house, Lordy, that's house.
It was reported, you mentioned that.
I sent a lot of complaints to code enforcement about this.
Okay, I'll, I'll check on it and see. I'm not familiar with them by myself, but I'll look.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other council members? Would anybody else be interested in looking at the temporary speed bumps? I had a hard, maybe just email up to you, because I don't wanna be having a meeting.
I don't want to disagree with you right now, because I know that we probably need them, but if we had speed bumps on just every road that we have here in town, our first responders would have a hard time getting through to people that really need them when they need them.
You want to address speed bump, street bump, chief? You have to buy the microphone somewhere. I'll go and get it here if you want.
As far as speed bumps go, the traditional older speed bumps that are just the, will seem to be the asphalt pumps, do a lot of damage to our vehicles. The newer speed bumps that I see, and actually I see them more in San Antonio than anywhere, are the, the types that are pieced together, it's a certain type of plastic, and you can shape and mold, almost like a, a ramp, where it goes up a certain amount of inches at a certain amount of angle, and then it flattens out on a platform, and then comes right back down. And the platform is elongated. And when you have something like that, it has the same effect where it will slow down vehicles, but it doesn't damage emergency response vehicles. So if we could do something like that, I wouldn't have a problem with that. Going back to the issue at hand, as far as parking on the streets, parking on the streets hinders us when people park on both sides of the street and a fire truck's taking it. And we have that problem in my neighborhood, and constantly chasing people down and knocking on their doors, even asking them to, can you please? So, some of them probably do want to move.
Okay, thank you. Are you familiar, chief, with the Onata Drive over in Indian Head Lake District, those gradual humps that you have on Onata as you leave Onata, as you leave Indian Head Lake, and go towards Northland? There are gradual humps toward asphalt.
I thought they were a couple of weeks ago, I don't remember driving over those, but maybe I just wasn't paying attention.
Okay, yeah, and maybe they're just that sort of. Maybe you could take a look at it, see what you think.
I'll do that tonight.
I know you're talking about the Quik-Homp, these are, that is.
Yeah, they're extended.
Sure.
They're have a link, you're calling.
I'll take a look at it tonight.
Those are also located real close to the stop sign.
Yes.
So you're not going very fast when you go over them.
Right, you, they're turning onto on that. And so I don't know what they would do for speed if you're in a, you know, you know, like my street is basically two full blocks. And yours, yours is too, and I want to do for speed that. I think we should look at options, because it is, we have too much confusion in the city.
We got, we got a lot of petitions on the road, they got a stone wall trying to get that down, so.
Yeah, Pearson has got a petition and willing to pay for it. They took it in, they took off his top. Okay. Any other discussion on, on speed bumps or car safety here? That's your end. You still want to discuss it or not?
It's not on the agenda. I have it.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we have an appointment. Yes.
I am eight.
Eight, yes, that's, oh, that's the, that's the, eight doesn't want to discuss it, right?
Can we discuss it at last, Dave?
Okay, well, and there's a legal reason we don't.
Would you?
Okay, Stacey can do this better than me, but.
Well, we can, we can discuss it, but in order to revoke, suspend, or cancel the ordinance requesting a special election, that would have had to have been done before the filing date or the filing period closed. So I think at this point, it's too. So, I think at this point, it's too late to, to suspend the special election. And I think that's what Bob is referring to.
And then the reason is, again, it's a, people signed up, but we didn't like them. So, we're gonna call off them, actually, call appoint somebody. That's not how it works, you have a valid period who signs up, who gets to run. And so, there's a, there's a law that says we can pass an ordinance to appoint somebody, pass an ordinance to have a special election. But there's not a law that says we can have, pass an ordinance to repeal one for special election.
I think that's, yeah.
Barbara, you still want to talk more?
No, I've got my answer on that.
Okay.
I'm happy with it, but I got my answer. I think why they let one certain person on there is when he lied about everything he did to get on it. That irritates me, because everybody else has to follow the rules.
There's not a background check.
There should be.
Well, that is not up for the city council to set up.
Well, I thought that there was a background check.
No.
The county is actually the, the agency that certifies individuals to be put on the ballot, not the city. So, at this point, it's in the county's hands. And I know that Bob and I have both been in discussions with multiple people at the county, so it's being taken care of on their end.
We're looking into it, what, because we're independents. This is normally handled by party. So, the Ethics Commission has power over the five constitutional officers. And when you're state reps, senators, it's the Democrat Party, so do the Republican Party, and parties in the Democrat Party. But us being independent, there's not that oversight committee for independents. So, I've talked to Election Commission and say, what, what can we do to see the same can't happen again? So, they're looking into it, reporting up to their county attorney.
So, as it stands right now, it's gonna go forward.
Well, the election has to, this was, the ballot was certified, but the prosecutor attorney has information, and he's looking into it, so he'll make a decision what he should put in.
Oh, you have one other thing I need to add at this point, this in connection to this. I would like to make a motion to ask for resignation of a council member, Ms. Tara Smith. I have no faith in her judgment to do her job as a council member. For the last three years, she's done nothing but negative things to this city. Why would we still want her on this council? I let it slide the first time. I let it slide the second time, and I'm tired of letting it slide. I make a motion to ask for the resignation of Council Member Tara Smith.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, continue discussion.
Barbara, I respect what you're saying.
I'm gonna need you at, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna need you at my account.
You're gonna need mic to the mic?
I'm gonna knock it off.
You work out and study business.
I let it go the first time, but I just, I'm not that good.
Does your position or that?
All, all I wanna say is, we are elected on the city council by the voters. I may not like the decision that Terry makes, that Bishop makes, or that you make, but I do not feel I have the right to get someone off of the council, because I don't like what they do. That's what the voters do. Not, and that's what I think we should do. I think we're spending our time trying to get, I mean, if we do this, where does it stop? The next time, it might be the bishop. And so, now, everybody's mad at the bishop, so let's just vote him off the council. We cannot operate that way. That's not the way a government operates.
We, we can't vote along.
And, I mean, we can vote on it, but, you know, no matter how I feel about the things that have happened here, I am never gonna vote to have somebody removed based on the way, what they've done. That's something that there, there are other procedures in order, in place to do that. That's what, just like on, just like on the, the election. There is a proper way that, to make sure that someone is eligible. It's not up to us to decide who runs. Anybody that wants to run in this city can get their signature to make them run. It's not up to us. It's up to the prosecutor attorney or whatever to decide that that person is not eligible. The same thing as being on the city councils. We don't decide who's on the city council, but he can make that decision. And that's all I got.
The only way to remove somebody from the city council is to recall them. No way to remove a mayor, a governor, state representative, uh, state representative of the House, including, uh, looking for them in the House.
I, I believe Councilman Mashburn was asking to have a motion to ask her to resign.
That's right. We've already done that once. Have we not?
Let me see this. The elephant in the room is this. If the individual does not want to resign, they're not gonna resign, no matter what we go. They've already proved it. They already proved, I don't care if you come, they asked me to leave the room, I don't want to leave the room, I need the only people voting here. There's a good number of people on the board that feel the same way, that you're saying, how live? When it comes down to legalities, that's what stops the floor. You know, that's what stops, for a good example, if somebody crosses a person the wrong way, you might feel like putting some hands on them. But that's illegal. You gotta hire an attorney, because you go to jail, even though you're right. You could be a hundred percent right and a hundred percent wrong in life. So, my thing is, we've already asked that, we made a motion for that, and individuals refuse to do so. So, sometimes you have to tolerate, like your children. You know, sometimes you just gotta tolerate your children. You know, and I'm sure all of us who have children, it gets to an age you just gotta tolerate. But the people have spoken. And when the people speak, we gotta go with it. I mean, even if you don't like it.
We can take revenge, can't take revenge, we can't take who's served.
That's right. In the military, I served a lot for that, like, I mean, I, I lived.
I lived that way.
And you know that, Carl. There were some people, you know, I used to see his partner up, but I wanted to turn it up, and it's.
Okay, so this is null and void, I can tell, but that's okay. I see Rick Cron has come online, and I asked him to be online to read his article that he put in the paper, so it would be in the minute meetings. Rick, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm with y'all.
Do you have your copy of the article that you wrote?
It'll take me a minute to call it out.
And when would Rick's copy sent to us?
Is this legal?
Is this legal, Stephanie?
You just told me a moment ago, it has to be read in the meeting.
That's right, it's not on the agenda. We didn't make no motion to put anything else on the agenda?
Actually, I, I didn't move, but since I didn't have it with me, there was a file to read.
It's still not on the agenda. It's illegal, is it?
I, I gotta ask, what's the problem with it being in the minutes?
I mean, are we, are we allowing Rick to do this as a citizen? Or are you trying to do this because it's on the agenda? I guess is my question. If we're having open mic and he's wanting to read this, just like Brian read his statement, that's one thing. But if you're doing it as part of the agenda, then I believe whoever brought that up is correct, it's not on the agenda.
I want it read as his personal opinion, not because of what was on the agenda of the meeting. And I know that he can do that.
You gotta read it.
Uh, give me about ten seconds.
So, Rick, Rick, you look forward, we have other business we have to take care of, and you will be at the end of this, not different, so it's gonna be a while.
Uh, yeah, if y'all just continue, then if you want it read, we can read it at the end of the meeting.
Right, we just got one thing we're doing.
Oh.
I understand the motion to appoint Matt Green to the barbecue shack. David Bush, on the empty commission. Got a motion to, I give you a second.
Yes.
All those who ever say aye?
Aye.
All those who want to say nay? All right, new business, Rick, you can read your article.
Let, let me say something, Rick, before you get started, Ted. You wait for a long delay.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, I have something I have to address. September eleventh, there was a post on Facebook, the number nine eleven. And the statement after it is, we have become very relaxed after this incident. We know what culture committed this offense. All I can say is wow. Someone with their uneducated knowledge of culture contacted one of my fellow council members and said that was a racist statement. First of all, I'm not racist. Second of all, I was referring to biblical culture. And I emailed my fellow council member, and I put certain scriptures that I could talk to, what I'm talking about, and otherwise, the last thing will be a great fall, and be accepted. So, to that person who emailed my fellow council member saying that was a racist statement, my council member, do your research, don't comment if you ain't got the facts. That was not a racist statement. The culture that we have now is everyone is doing whatever they wanna do. So, for that person to make that statement about me, you're racist. Because in my mind, wasn't nowhere near racism, it was the culture. Thank you for your time.
Okay, now, Barbara, is this the one that, that ran most recently?
Yes.
Okay, the headline is, "Council Looks at Stopping Election." Candidate's Conviction Puts Eligibility in Doubt So City Might Name Susessor. A complaint has been filed on the eligibility of whether or not a Jacksonville resident can run for city council with a twenty-five-year Class A misdemeanor for theft on his record. With the complaint against Lance Delaney, the prosecuting attorney's office, as well as the Pulaski Sheriff's Office, have become involved and are investigating. Members of the city council are debating whether or not to rescind the special election, which according to city attorney Stephen Freeman, the council can do. But if the council rescinds the election, then it will have to appoint a resident to that seat vacated by Foreign Police Chief Gary Sykes, who moved out of town. Councilmember Les Collins is looking to change the way possible candidates qualify to run under the current law to run for Page Five. Page Five.
Well, I've got a break here, since this is on the record. I would just like to clarify that Rick did call me and explain that we never discussed this. I never gave him the quote saying that this would be able to be rescinded. So, since this is on the record, wanted that clarification on there.
And, and she's right, we kept missing each other on it to verify. Jacksonville Council said a possible candidate needs to collect thirty signatures from registered voters who are residents of Jacksonville, but Collins believes the signature should come from the ward the candidate wants to represent. Collins has reviewed the petition signatures for both Delaney and his opponent, Brian Blevins. Using a Google map overlay of Ward Two, the district they are vying to represent, Blevins had eight signatures from the ward, and Delaney had none. "That's horrible," Collins said. Collins is bringing forth an ordinance at Thursday's meeting that will state petitions to run for office must be signed by individuals in that ward. Mayor Bob Johnson plans to meet Monday with the Election Commission about options depending on how the council votes. Delaney, in a recent social media post, said they are bringing up stuff from a quarter century ago. I think it's because they know I'm gonna win, they don't want that change around here. Delaney's record is tied to a ruling about three years ago made by the Supreme Court that said Jeffrey Hurwicke couldn't be police chief because of misdemeanor crime of filing a false report twenty years earlier. In that case, Attorney Nate Steele, representing Councilmember Tara Smith, who brought the suit against the city in Hurwicke, the definition of the infamous crime was clarified and does include theft. Delaney believes what happened twenty-five years ago is not germane to today. But two thousand fifteen university law review states, "Consider whether any of the following persons should be barred from seeking or holding public office. A small-town mayor who funded municipal, funneled municipal funds for personal use and was convicted of embezzlement. A mayoral candidate who removed an opponent's campaign sign while seeking reelection and was convicted of theft. A county sheriff who took three chickens from an overturned freight truck over thirty years before seeking office and was convicted of theft. Under current Arkansas law, all three of these individuals were barred from political office. The Arkansas Supreme Court has encountered each of these scenarios and determined that the convictions disqualified the individuals from seeking or holding office," the law review said.
Thank you, Rick.
You're welcome.
Anything else to come for this council?
I, I just wanted to go one thing, and it's, Ted has said, since this is in the record, but I'm not sure where, where the city council debated this issue, because the first I knew of this issue was when I read it in the back.
Can you hear me by the mic, say that? I can hear you.
Go a little further, if you had a mic.
I'll also add that I didn't actually debate within your fellow council member, members, because that would be a violation of, of, of.
Okay, anything else? I entertain a motion to withdraw. Move.